Hello.
Haven't seen anything.
Good evening, I'd like to recall the meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board back into session to reconvene. First item would be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next would be Board attendance. All Board members are present except Director Hyen. And we have one agenda modification. There will not be, where is it?
Um, item.
We will not, item 6C, we will not be, we will be dropping that off of the agenda. Okay. Thank you. So, next would be spotlights on success.
Our first spotlight will be presented by Karina Lee, the Executive Director of the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation. Welcome, Karina.
Thank you Superintendent Perry. I would like to ask McKay Principal Rob Schoper, Assistant Principal Athletic Director Jeremy Kelly, and volunteers from the McKay Athletic Boosters Club to please come forward and stand there with Chair Kylo.
I'm going to just clap right now for them.
Okay. Hey. Our Volunteers of the Month for March 2018 are the members of the McKay High School Athletic Boosters Club nominated by Principal Rob Schoper. The McKay Athletics Booster actively supports McKay in many ways. They recently redesigned the organizational focus of the club to ensure athletics and programs are well supported. A great example of this work is the boosters did to engage local community and business leaders in support of a new turf field for McKay. When the Royal Scots played their first football game on the new field last September, a sense of pride was felt by McKay students, parents, and loyal alumni. Up until that time, McKay was the only one of our six traditional high schools that still played on a grass field. Last month, the boosters ran the coaches' room at the Greater Valley Conference District Wrestling Tournament hosted by McKay. Boosters worked long hours and took care of tournament support staff and coaches totaling more than 150 people. The McKay community, actually the entire Salem Kaiser community, is very thankful for the support and leadership of the McKay Athletics Booster Club. Congratulations on being named Volunteer of the Month.
Did you see our board chair's socks? I'm not sure you guys saw that. Thank you very much. Alright, our next spotlight will be presented by Lillian Govis, our Director of Community Relations and Communications.
This one is really exciting for me because I got the privilege to work with this young student as every single media outlet in the Portland metro area was calling, trying to find this young man. So, it's so exciting for us to continue recognizing McKay with Principal Rob Schoper, Vice Principal Jeremy Kelly, and our Student of the Night, Raul Marquez. If you'll come forward.
Woo!
And Ra- Raul, if your family wants to come up, you can bring them too.
Yay, we get to meet Mom and Dad.
So, this outstanding McKay High senior is a young man who decided to set an idea in motion. He's been real busy over the course of the last year. He saw an issue in our community where some young people needed help, and Raul got some adults motivated and made some action happen. Raul's the Royal Scots Student Body President, and he's also a member of the Mid Willamette Valley United Way Youth Leadership Group. In January, after partnering with the Community Action Agency of Salem, he presented a proposal to United Way Board of Directors for a shelter to address youth homelessness in Salem, and he walked away that night with a $100,000 grant for the project. That grant generated a lot of publicity, and I saw one of the reporters who covered him earlier here tonight. That generated a lot of publicity. Raul was interviewed by Portland TV stations, Oregon Public Broadcasting's Think Out Loud, and the Statesman Journal with Jonathan Bach. Raul is passionate about supporting homeless youth and is an incredible advocate on their behalf. His media appearances have led to almost $25,000 in donations to the project from individuals wanting to help out. I think they have an online funding opportunity, if anyone wants to look that up. During the February Legislative Session at the State Capitol, Raul interned with Representative Diego Hernandez, and there he met with House and Senate leaders and walked away with more than $200,000 in funding for the youth homeless shelter, which is included in the state's omnibus spending bill. That money is being raised for a proposed youth homeless shelter at 220 15th Street Southeast in Salem. The home costs about $320,000, with additional funds being raised to help with maintenance and other expenses. As of March 5th, the United Way had raised $362,000 of its $400,000 goal for the shelter. Those wanting to help Raul and the United Way reach their goal are encouraged to donate at supportraul.com. It's our privilege to recognize Raul tonight for his leadership, his hard work, and his passion that he's used to spark action in our community to tackle the problem of youth homelessness in Salem.
Lillian?
Yes.
Could I add just one more thing?
Oh, certainly.
Today in Kaiser, at the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce, it was the State of the City Address by the Mayor, and Raul came and made a remarkable speech to the Kaiser business community. He was articulate, he was informative, and dynamic, and charismatic, and just left the crowd amazed at what a magnificent young man he is. So, I know your parents are proud of you, but I know everybody in Kaiser was very proud to have you out there today. So, nice job.
Lillian will also now present our Business Partner of the Month.
It's my pleasure to recognize our Student Services Staff Becky Willhite, and from Epic Fitness, General Manager Michelle Vanderjat. So, our Business Partner of the Month for March 2018 is Epic Fitness, nominated by the Salem Kaiser Independent Living Program, which is part of our Student Services Program. The Independent Living Program serves students with special needs and helps them master skills necessary to seek employment and live independently. One day while working out at Epic Fitness, Salem Kaiser Employment Specialist Becky Willhite noticed a lot of opportunities for students at the Center, at the Fitness Center. She spoke with Epic General Manager Michelle Vanderjat about the possibilities, and Michelle agreed to participate as a district business partner. At Epic Fitness, "We value everyone in the community and are proud to be part of this great program that helps teach the skills and value of hard work to those that need and want it," Michelle said. Professional skills students learn include helping maintain fitness equipment and doing basic janitorial and laundry tasks. Epic has a learning library that is perfect for students wanting to learn how to organize and manage books. Students working at Epic Fitness wear branded T-shirts, as you may see here, and name tags, just like all the other employees. Becky said this makes them feel like they're part of the team. Providing good customer service is also a very important skills that students learn, and Becky says that Epic Fitness excels at customer service. Epic Fitness is located in South Salem at 706 Madron Avenue Southeast. It's rumored that at least one of our Board Directors does his regular workouts there. Thank you Epic Fitness for so warmly providing our Independent Living Program students with opportunities to learn job skills and to feel like a real part of the Epic Team. Congratulations on being named our Business Partner of the Month.
Okay, next we have public comment on items related to the agenda, and we have no one signed up, I'm told. Okay. So now we have action items. Our first action item is the evaluation of the Superintendent, which I believe she has received. We've all seen it, and you have an official copy?
I do have an official copy.
Okay. So, I would accept a motion at this time to officially give the Superintendent the evaluation. Chuck?
Chair Kylo, I would make the motion to offer the evaluation to Christie Perry for her performance.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Jesse? Thank you. Anyone wish to make a comment about the evaluation before we vote? Kathy?
Well, I think that the whole process has reminded us of how lucky we are to have Superintendent Perry in Salem Kaiser Schools for a variety of reasons. She's certainly doing a wonderful job, in my opinion, and the Board's opinion. She has done everything we've required and more.
Okay. Anyone else? Sharon?
So, for those of you who can't see the evaluation, but a couple of things that I'd like to just point out. One of the things that we noted about Superintendent Perry is how proactive she is and how positive when we have something come up in the district, and not, not in a reactive way, but you respond, and you respond very well. And we so much appreciate that you seek out comments and input, and you include students and parents and the Board, and, you know, we've had some things come up in the district in the last several months, and your leadership and your guidance and your direction. And although in your evaluation, you know, it's just, it's a few sentences, but, you know, the tone that you set for this district and the way you react and respond to things and how proactive you are, we so much appreciate you. So, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing, seeing no one else. All those in favor of accepting the evaluation as presented at this time, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, Approved Curriculum Associates Ready Mathematics for the Common Core as the district's new mathematics instructional materials.
Good evening Superintendent Perry, Chair Kylo, and members of the Board. Tonight, I am returning for the second reading of our proposal for the elementary math adoption. Since the last Board meeting, each of you were given invitations to come and review the recommended Ready Math materials and ask any questions that you might have of our staff regarding the materials or the process that we used with teachers and other leaders to identify this as our recommendation. Last week, there was also a mid-year data review involving the six elementary schools that are currently conducting a pilot with Ready Math. These schools are Hayesville, Highland, Kaiser, Morningside, Salem Heights, and Scott. The data from these schools showed significant growth among all the students in the first half of this school year, as well as the disaggregated data for English learners and for students in special education. And I'm going to share that disaggregated data with you in just a moment. But it's troubling when we can't bring great results to you. It bothers us that this has been true for us in elementary math. The slide that you're seeing here matches what you have on the front of your packet that we handed out to you. I believe we handed the packet. Yep, okay, good. And then in the packet, you'll get some additional data that shows state report card information for three of our pilot schools, the ones that have had enough time to actually go through a cycle of state assessments. And that shows some state report card data for comparison schools. So, it's interesting when you compare the pilot schools with elementary schools that are like them in Salem Kaiser that have not piloted, and you'll see a dramatic difference there. But this slide up on the screen reflects our current problem. It shows exactly where we have seen improvement and where we have not seen improvement over the past three years. Despite everybody doing their best, we are persistently underwater in elementary math. Our results are significantly below the state average at every level in elementary. The state averages include Salem Kaiser's results. So, that means if we pulled Salem Kaiser's data out, the rest of the state averages would actually be higher. That has to change. And you'll also notice on this slide that it's not until middle or high school that we see our students meet or perhaps exceed state averages. Meanwhile, the data from our pilot elementary schools is very promising across several measures. Progress monitoring shows significant growth for students in all grade levels and in all subgroups. Let's take a look. I apologize for some small numbers here, but I want you to pay most attention to just the color bars. This slide demonstrates growth from fall to winter for English learners at our pilot elementary schools. The fall is represented in the green bars, and the winter results are in the blue. The darker colors represent students who have already reached proficiency for their grade level. The lighter colors represent students who are on track to meet proficiency by the end of the year. In other words, they're on track and appropriate, but they still have a little bit of work to do in order to fully meet proficiency. The dramatic differences that we see between the fall and winter results illustrate that real growth is indeed happening in one of the subgroups that we've not been very successful with in moving the dial. For instance, you will see that in the fall, none of our third graders, who are English learners at these schools, appeared to be proficient or even on track toward proficiency. That's that blank space in the middle of the chart. And yet, by the winter diagnostic, 11% of our English learners at those schools in the third grade are on track. And the growth that we are seeing among all grade levels for English learners at these schools suggests that we won't see zeros again like that next year. Another slide about our English learners demonstrates the dramatic decrease in students who are at a Tier 3 level. Tier 3 means students whose math is already an entire year or more below grade level. The longer these students remain behind, the deeper the need becomes for interventions. I would encourage you to notice that in the fall, 35 of our fir- 35% of our first graders were more than one grade level below in math, and by the winter, it's down to 7%. We see similar growth from fall to winter this school year with our students in special education. Again, dramatic increases in the percentage of students who are now making progress toward grade level proficiency. Data like this, these kinds of results, they're necessary precursors to the better results we want to see. It is not possible for students to suddenly become grade level proficient without first demonstrating growth. And this diagnostic information directly matches with how these same students perform on EZCBM and the state assessments. Staff at our pilot schools are seeing for the first time what a viable curriculum resource can do, and it frees our teachers up from having to create their own materials and instead focus on student learning. We must feel the urgency to do better for our students. This slide compares our students in the blue, who are in the pilot elementary schools, to all students in the nation who are also using this curriculum. So while it is daunting to see the magnitude of the work ahead, we also happen to believe that over time, our kids can reach and meet those averages. And for the first time, it would put Salem Kaiser in a position to actually raise the state averages in math instead of pulling the state averages down. As part of tonight's recommendation, we felt it would be helpful for you to hear directly from a teacher who has been part of this curriculum pilot at Highland Elementary School. And I'd like to introduce to you Gabriella Arenas.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Okay. So, I was asked to speak about before Ready Math came in and after, and so, start with the before. Before this, before last year, I really had to rely on creating my own curriculum, which was time-consuming, and the curriculum that I created had a plethora of resources as part of it. I had resources, or part of my collection included materials from Engage New York, Bridges. I had things from Teachers Pay Teachers, a lot of things from Pinterest, and just activities or resources that were passed down to me. So, I created my curriculum. I had it, which is awesome. The problem with my curriculum is just, when it comes to alignment, it's really difficult. And when I mean alignment, I'm talking about across grade levels. When we would talk about things, for example, in math, multiplication, I'm going to give the example of a area model. We teach the area model now, how to multiply using it. In third grade, they would use the multiplication box. In fifth grade, they would use the multiplication matrix. So, our students would hear different language, different years, and it was really hard not only to align with language, but it was also hard to align with just the progression, appropriate progression of standards. We would have to take our time to check in with third grade, we would have to take our time to check in with fifth grade. What's going on? Are we progressing the right way? Creating tests was really, if you guys have ever taught, creating tests is time-consuming, and we're not perfect, so we make mistakes. We have to refine our tests to match, to make sure that they match with the standards. And when we tested, we were just, we stuck to testing to the current standards, whatever we were teaching. Life now is, we really have a strong curriculum that we can rely on. There is a strong scope and sequence. The alignment is especially apparent this second year of the program. You can tell that the kids, they've, they've heard this material, and it's really scaffolded for them. There's a really strong progression of skills. In terms of the assessment piece, I feel like there's two teachers in the room. I feel like the online component really helps my students. It assesses those skills that they need help on. And not only does it assess those skills, but it also gives them the foundation when they're on, doing that online piece. There's a true differentiation. I am able to teach, sorry, I'm able to teach my core and assess my core using the online curriculum. I'm also able to use the diagnostics to just, to help meet all my students' needs. I, I just feel so good now that we have this curriculum, and I really hope that we're able to keep this because we need it, our students need it, and it is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you Gabby. Unless you have any questions for us, I'll close with a couple of things. First of all, I would like to acknowledge our staff at all of our pilot elementary schools for their excellent work. I also want to thank Sue Luther and Amy Williams Rojas and the other staff on our district team who have steered this adoption process. And I'll close with recommending your approval of Curriculum Associates Ready Math for our new mathematics instructional materials at the elementary level.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Comment first.
No, you may not. Would you like to make the motion?
No.
No. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Chuck?
I'll second.
Well, okay, Sharon was already in line.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So Chuck has made the motion to accept, I assume, the curriculum?
Yes.
And Sharon has seconded it?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments from anyone? Kathy, Jim, Jesse?
I'd like to make some comments, and Mr. Carlisle too. I was pretty rough last time, the last Board meeting on the math adoption. I wanted to be absolutely certain that we'd gone through everything we could to make sure that, first of all, teachers felt comfortable with it, secondly, that students were getting it and liking it and working on it. And so, I did sit here and argue some. Went out and looked, went over the curriculum last week and sat and talked to them. They were delightful. I was amazed at their knowledge of the curriculum that they'd adopted, and I was amazed at their conversation, administrative conversation with the teachers that had been using it. And we particularly talked about Hayesville, some about Highland, and I will heartily endorse it at this point, so.
Okay, Sharon? Joe, Jim?
I just have a question. I wasn't here at the last Board meeting. What's the cost of this adoption?
The company has several different cost options, all of which are locked in until 2021 through a contract with the state of Oregon. The structure can range between four and a half to 5.2 million dollars, depending on how long the contract goes. That includes updates to the materials. It's a subscription-based material rather than just like a static textbook that remains the same the whole time. There also is ongoing professional development for staff to make sure that implementation goes well.
So, a couple of comments. One, I want to thank the staff for taking time to meet with me and talk about this. I've probably been the most critical of our most recent adoption that we did, and I wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence to make sure that this was going to work for our kids, all of our kids in our school district, because our last one didn't work out so well with Pearson. But I feel more confident about this. I've talked to several teachers at several of the pilot sites who feel that the curriculum is good. Several other folks said we could have gone with either one, that it's math and kids don't like math, so don't ask the kids. But I did ask some kids that were in the program, and they like the ability to have the curriculum and not have to wait for things to get to them. The teachers were excited about it, the administrators were excited about it. I just hope we don't have problems with this adoption like we had with the last adoption. And I know you've done your due diligence, Kelly, you and your team, to make sure that this will be a curriculum that'll work for all of our kids regardless of their language barriers. So, I appreciate the effort and the time that you took to answer my questions and do the background work. So, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Chuck, did you have a comment?
So, you've got 35 fourth graders in a class with a variety of different math abilities. How does this program individualize it enough so that the kids at the bottom are getting what they need and the kids at the top are getting what they're getting? In a class of, say, 34 fourth graders?
That's a wonderful question, and part of what I think sets this set of curriculum apart from some of the others. Curriculum Associates not only has the materials that, that we use for primary instruction, but also some additional supports through a resource called iReady, which provides for some scaffolded learning opportunities for students who may be already proficient but needing additional challenge and stimulation, and then other students who might need some additional supports in order to get to proficiency. In addition to that, Curriculum Associates makes all grade levels of content available to every teacher. So, if you happen to have a student who's a grade level or two beyond the rest of the class, you-
you can access the material that addresses the same standard but at a higher grade level and continue their development at that level as well.
Can I answer your question?
And then it must drive Gabby crazy to have kids all over the spectrum and trying to pull together all of those things and...
I will, I'll just offer a possible response on Gabby's behalf. That it's far better to have a ready resource instead of having to make it up on your own.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Jesse?
I just wanted to say thank you really quick, especially for everything that the staff has done to share with us the information. So that way, when we come to curriculum and we're very cautious about it, of course, that we have the information we need as well as a true understanding of what we're doing with the, with the curriculum. So I want to thank you for that. I was very, very critical and cautious of the curriculum when I first looked at it. Simply just because I feel like a lot of times, people will just look at the numbers and the charts that we see, and they get so fixated on the numbers that we lose touch within the classroom, talking to kids. And that's one thing that I felt, after seeing, I wasn't here for the Ready Gen when it was adopted. However, after seeing that, it made me even more cautious of a new curriculum that we were looking at. So of course, what I, what I did is I went down to a few of our schools. I spoke with a ton of teachers, spoke with a few principals, as well as a lot of the feedback that we got from our pilot schools. And I saw that this really was a great curriculum. I found that the, one of the big differences, the teachers said, were between the one that we're adopting and the other option was just the simplicity. There were, there were a lot alike. It was just, there were a few things that this one had better than the other one. And so it, and it wasn't a huge, a huge difference beyond that, from what I, from what I saw. However, this is the one that I feel like will really help all ki, help our kids grow, as long as, of course, we're not fixing all the numbers and we're focused on the kids. And so with that, I just wanted to thank you guys for, for all the, all the work you put into letting us know about it.
Anyone else before I ask mine? Director Hyun has not texted me a question yet, so now I expect it to come. My question is to the superintendent. Do we have 5.2 million in the budget to spend on this for next year?
So I'll answer it in this way. What we need is an adoption, and then we are going to have to figure out at what level could we afford, if at all. We do, we are in the middle of the budget process. And so it's two steps, and it's an awkward step because one is we needed the adoption. The second is, will we have the funds? And it will be hard to figure this amount of dollars out in our budget for next year. But that has to be the next step.
Okay, anyone else? All right, all those in favor of accepting Curriculum Associates Ready Mathematics? Please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Marty just voted aye as well. Next, we have the Child Abuse Proclamation. Child Abuse Prevention Month. I don't know if everybody's seen it. I guess I'll read it before we vote on it. Go ahead. Do you want to read it?
I'll read it.
Okay.
Do you want me to?
Sure.
Oh, wow.
Go.
This is exhilarating. What, do I start at the whereas?
Yes.
All right. Whereas, every child deserves to live in a safe, loving and caring family environment. And whereas, in 2016, there were 11,843 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon. And whereas, we endeavor to join together as individuals, organizations and government agencies to prevent child abuse in our state by providing opportunities to educate, train and support caregivers by raising awareness of relevant topics, including child development, basic care skills, discipline strategies and goal-setting for parents. And whereas, by strengthening families and providing safe, stable and nurturing environments that are free from violence, abuse and neglect, opp, neglect, opportunities are, opportunities are created for children's optimal growth and success, ensuring a secure future for our communities where the kids of our children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Now therefore, the Board of Directors of the Salem Kaiser School District 24J asks everybody to join together in protecting our children and hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you. Anyone wish to move?
Move adoption of the proclamation.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. Second. Discussion? Discussion, anyone? Comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next item would be, is the Consent Calendar, I believe? Sorry, too many papers up here. Consent Calendar, we usually take these as one item. Are there any items that you wish to pull?
Yeah.
Okay, Jim?
The Personnel Actions B.
Okay. Anyone else have an item they want to?
The grant budgets.
You want to, okay. Anyone else have an item they want pulled? Okay. Then all those in favor of accepting Consent Calendar 7C signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, now going back to appropriation of grants budgets. Mr. Lebold?
Oh, sure. Under the G174H Title II-A, 1617 carryover, as well as the G18H9 IDEA Part B, Section 611. It says, on the first one, it says, "This grant provides for improvement of staff quality and thus increases student academic achievement." I was kind of, I was wondering if there's any more, any way to get more detail about what we're doing with it? Rather, it seems kind of vague. I mean, I totally believe it's going to the right place. It's just, I would like to know, what is that? Same with the second one where it says, IDEA funds provide for the excess cost of special education and related services to students with disabilities. I also know, it looks like, it says covers special education staffing, of course, but more of like, what is it? A little bit more detail, I would like.
So let me give you a snapshot, and I won't likely give you the detail you're interested off the cuff. But Professional Learning Title II-A, that's a federal program, as well as IDEA is a federal program. And the funds have very specific uses and require an approval of a plan by Oregon Department of Education that is approved by the feds. The professional learning pays for some instructional coaching, pays for some professional learning opportunities for our teachers and a variety of other things. A couple of our, also our new teacher mentors are funded out of Title II. The IDEA, these, I believe, are primarily some of our additional staffing related to some of our adult assistance with students, but I don't have that specificity.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, can I answer your questions?
Yep.
Anyone else have a question about grants? All those in favor of accepting, adopting the grant appropriations, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next one that was pulled out, Mr. Green, Personnel Action.
Well, one, I wanted to make sure all board members had the opportunity to look through all the names and make sure they didn't have to declare conflict. I was double-checking to make sure that none of my relatives are being hired by the district. And then I had a couple of questions, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Nope.
So this is probably for you, Superintendent Perry. When we look at the authorization of contracts for our administrators, when they're going from second to third year, first to second year, or we're extending their contract beyond, I'm assuming that those level directors have done the evaluation necessary? And are recommending these folks going forward?
Yes, yes.
Under our evaluation process that we have in place?
Correct.
And then under 16 and 17, because they're singled out, we have to list them by number. But I'm looking at 16, so under 16, we're offering employee number 6514. Just a one-year contract as a licensed administrator? Am I reading that properly?
That is correct.
Okay. And non-extend under 17, is that a teacher? Is that an administrator? Do we know?
This is, both 16 and 17 are administrative positions. Both of these positions were not extended last year. 16 has been extended for one year, which would have meant some sort of a program of assistant for improvement that they met. And number 17, this is the second year of the non-extension.
Any other questions? Jesse?
Yeah. I have a potential conflict of interest, or should I just do a normal conflict of interest? Okay, yeah, I have a conflict of interest. My brother is getting
Moved.
Moved to another contract.
Yes.
So therefore, I shouldn't be voting on that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Thought I saw that name in there.
It would have come up, trust me.
Almost got away with it.
Yeah, almost, yeah. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of accepting 7B, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? I have no signal from down below, so that passes. Next would be?
Mr. Chair, you might want to note for the record that Jesse did abstain from the vote.
Jesse, well, I believe the record did cover that, so, yes. Thank you, Jim. Readings, property tax exemptions. Superintendent Perry?
All right, one of our requests last time when we had a property tax exemption for concurrence was that we have some sort of policy for when we would approve the tax exemption. So what I have done, you have a board plate here, but what I have done is I have started a draft of a for governance policy, so BG 13. I, I think this is the place for it within our policy governance book. But what I have basically said is that if a applicant has come through the city ordinance process or the Marion County Board of Commissioners process, that then it could come to us next. And when I reviewed the ordinance from the city, it's fairly specific that it's for a nonprofit that is doing housing for low-income housing. I believe it also includes the shelter, Sharon, which was your question, but I've not had a chance to validate that. So this will be a first reading to see if this is the format that would be helpful to you so that the next one that comes along, we can say to an applicant, here is how it works once you've gone through the city or the county process.
Jim?
So I'm, I'm reading this, and I look under number one. It says or, so they have either been approved by the city or Marion County, not both. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then they would apply for our, they have to be approved by one before they can come to us to seek approval.
Correct.
This does not guarantee them approval at our level. But they have had to at least go through one of those other governmental entities, gotten approval, and then bring the application to us.
Yes.
Any other questions? Kathy?
Superintendent, is this, how long does this approval last? When it comes, how long does our approval last? I noticed some of them are longer.
Yeah, I did not address that in here. The, the city, I think, is a 10
10-year.
It might be a 10-year approval, but they have to get annual, they have to get annual approval. Not fully through the council, I don't think, but they have to at least submit that they're still using the property for the same use and are still a nonprofit. So I believe it's up to 10. So you, and you, as a board, you just need to decide, do you want to follow city criteria? Or do you want an annual renewal of these? And I'll take your direction on that.
I'd like an annual renewal myself.
You're good with that, too? I'm just watch, I'm looking for head nods or some signal.
I would say, and I don't know if Kathy means annual review or renewal. They could be the same, or they could be a little different, because an annual renewal could be more labor-intensive for them and for us, or just a review.
I would like an annual renewal. And I think that's because the properties change and the makeup of the city changed, changes. We haven't had such a tremendous problem as we have now with that sort of thing. So I was hoping that some of the city policies and the things the cities were doing might reduce that. And I would like it to go for a short amount of time.
Anyone else? Jesse?
Well, we're not voting on this today, are we? We're just looking at it right now?
Yeah, been providing comment and thoughts.
Anyone else? Input, direction? You want to have, Kathy has a follow-up or you have a follow-up?
I have a follow-up.
Okay, go ahead.
So Sharon said review or renewal. Review could be an administrative review of that. Renewal could come to the board for renewal. And I just need a little direction where if it's something you want to have come to the board for renewal.
It could be an administrative review as far as I was concerned, but I would not like it a full 10 years just on that basis. So perhaps we could do an administrative review and then, I don't know, even a five-year and a five-year more extensive review.
Okay, Chuck?
I just wonder if we would benefit from some research on what other school districts do. You know, in this matter, you know?
You're smiling. Do you know something we don't know?
Of course not. I'm down here as a left hand.
Anyone else? Comments? Okay, do you have some direction?
I do. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, that was reading one. Now we would move on to Executive Limitation 9, Asset Protection.
All right, this is Executive Limitation Number 9, Asset Protection, and it's the ninth of 12 monitoring reports. And I'm going to draw your attention to a couple places. The first is under Limitation Number 1, Fail to Establish and Maintain Policies and Procedures to Ensure Reasonable Protection of the District Assets. And one area of risk in most organizations is around cash handling. And in our case, use of pro cards, which are procurement cards, which are credit cards with a limited, limited limit on them. And this, during the past year, the district has experienced several incidents of theft and misuse of pro cards. And we have been tightening our controls and pro card. Credit card or procurement card. And we have been tightening our controls, but in that, we have begun to see, we did have a number of incidences of theft. So what I want you to know is that we've handled any incident of theft on the HR side. But it also is really pointed to, we need to do it better, training and implementation of policies around how do you handle petty cash? How do you handle your pro card use in those? It's mainly in school offices, and especially, a lot of our school offices handle a lot of cash. So that's an area of risk, and we've, we've actually seen some risks there. The next item I want to draw your attention to is number two. And this is around the Risk Fund, and it's all under evidence of compliance. But we do think we need a more detailed analysis to warrant the viability of the Risk Fund. We are, you know, as you look ahead and you look into the future, we should be putting a little more aside in the Risk Fund. And we worry that we're sticking enough there for future. So we need to do a more analysis of that, and I wanted to point that out to you. And then the next area of non-compliance, you've heard about this. This was related to our CAFR, and we did have two, a couple incidences of internal control deficiencies related to those additional earnings and our grant funds. It was time tracking. Basically, we, they pulled a couple items there. And I believe that Okay, I believe that's the end of the things I wanted to highlight from this report.
Any questions about EL 9? Jim?
Just one. Some other school districts in the state have gotten in trouble around student activity fees or student athletic fees. How do we monitor those in the Salem Kaiser School District? So let's say there's a booster program at Sprague High School, and they do a big fundraiser, and they can raise a lot of money. You know, they can raise 30,000 to 40,000 to $50,000. Who monitors that? Who audits that to make sure that, one, appropriate expenditures are occurring? That there's redundancy on checking to make sure that those expenditures? Because ultimately, those are district funds. But who is, who's monitoring?
We do, we do have a monitoring system through the central office. I don't know I don't know, this is an area we've also identified that we'd like to be really careful about, because it has been an area of risk. And I don't think I could, off the top of my head, give you all the controls we have in place, and I won't tell you that I think we have enough yet.
Can, would it be okay if you could provide that offline to us?
Yep.
Just our process of how we monitor that and control that. We've, we've experienced some loss statewide.
Yes, yep.
So I just want to make sure that our district has appropriate protections in place as well.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other que, Chuck?
You talked about point number two.
Correct.
Will that be something that's dealt with in the budget process with the Budget Committee? Is that where some of that work will happen?
Yes, it could happen there, and I will know better the answer to that as we continue to look at revenue and expected expenditures. But it's a great question at the Budget Committee level.
Seems to come up.
It does.
Anyone else? Executive Limitation nine? All right. All of those, we do this by consensus. Those willing to accept the report, please thumbs up. If you can live with the report, thumb sideways. If you have a problem, thumb down. So, okay, we've got one sideways, and the rest are okay. All right, so it's accepted. Thank you. Next would be the Strategic Plan Report, PBIS. Oh, this is a second-year administrator now.
Ouch.
She's still probationary, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, she is.
Oh, okay.
We just voted on her, actually.
Good evening, Superintendent Perry, Chair Kylo, and members of the board. The Strategic Plan Report for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports was included in your packet, and that report includes data on the implementation of PBIS, including training, coaching, and technical assistance currently being provided to schools and planned for the remainder of this school year. What I'd like to provide for you tonight are a few additional details on our PBIS work. And beginning with, we are proud of the movement that we have made thus far, but we are not yet where we want to be with our implementation of PBIS. We've been focusing our efforts on tier-one implementation, and that prioritizes schoolwide culture change, specifically targeting common expectations and common language. So, for example, schools have adopted short slogans typically connected to their school mascots. This happens to be an example from a middle school. I can leave these for you, but every school has identified some sort of connecting phrase. This happens to be Walker Middle School. It says, "Walker Wildcats Roar," and the roar is respectful, organized, active participant, and responsible. So those four expectations cover the majority of behaviors across all of the school. So students are taught, what does it look like to be respectful in the hallway, in the cafeteria, in the office, in the classroom? And rather than having a list of rules, staff use that common language. Are you being respectful? We expect you to be respectful. And we don't have a lot of, don't run in the hallway, don't throw food in the cafeteria. We simply speak about everything in the umbrella of being respectful. Very similar in an elementary school. Gubser happens to use rock, responsible, on task, cautious, and kind. So on the playground, things at Gubser, rather than a list of don't-dos, don't jump off the slide, don't climb on top of the jungle gym, those are simply all under the umbrella of being cautious or safe. And so it provides a common language and a structure in which we begin to manage student behavior. And one of the biggest, the critical pieces of tier-one implementation is ensuring that everyone across the building is using that same language, so that the principal sounds the same as the classroom teacher, is the same as the cafeteria worker, is recess supervision, as PE, as someone in the special education classroom, that everyone is using the same common vocabulary to set a very clear structure and reliable expectations for kids. So tier-one is where our focus has been, and I think one of the things that I need you to hear is an acknowledgement of some of the intense escalated behaviors that we continue to see. And tier-one is not intended to meet the intense natures of some of the significant escalations that we have seen. Tier-one is set as that solid foundation, which eventually statistics say will cover about eighty percent of student behavior, but a strong tier-one will also help us to more consistently identify tier-two and tier-three behaviors. So when we have a rock-solid foundation, when those expectations are consistent, we will begin to accurately identify which students are exhibiting tier-two behaviors and how do we respond to those, and which students are exhibiting tier-three behaviors. If you remember, in your budget packet, you received some information on the Office of Behavioral Learning, and that had a pyramid in it that contained kind of a pyramid of resources. What were things that we were able to ramp up as behaviors escalated or intensified? And so the Office of Behavioral Learning is really the resource that we offer to schools when we get to tier-three behaviors, and those supports being able to come alongside school staff to deal with the intensity of, of students that need those significant levels of supports. So we are where we would expect to be in our PBIS implementation for two years in. We will continue to shore up tier-one in schools that need that additional attention in that area, and many of our schools are prepared to launch well into tier-two, and some are actually beginning some tier-three conversations as well. So questions about PBIS?
Questions for Linda, Jesse?
Yeah, I have a few. One of them is, because I've spent a lot of my time talking to teachers and people who are implementing PBIS.
Absolutely.
And one thing that, that kind of came up frequently was a few things. The first is, a lot of times when, because this program stands excellent, like when we're looking at it from this perspective, we can see why it would work.
Mm-hmm.
The problem is, of course, with anything, there's resistance to change, right? Especially when we're talking about kids. So once they hit about middle school, high school level, if we're implementing this and they're winning like a golden ticket or something, they're like, well, why do I want a golden ticket? And so, of course, the teachers' resistance isn't as, it's not like teachers are resisting. The problem is with students resisting, I feel like, I just wanted the administration to be aware that from the level, from what I've been hearing from teachers and from students, also is like, kind of a, I feel like the students aren't completely bought into it, at the middle, high school level, at certain, the schools that I've heard about. So I'm not saying it's not just, other schools have been super-successful, I've seen it, but there are somewhere, the students aren't completely sold. And so what I, what I think is, and I think as, as our kids get older, as the fifth graders who are used to this, getting to middle school would be fine, but the ones who are here right now, who didn't deal with this before, of course, is that resistance to change. And so I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that, so that way you could address it properly and like, I mean, at least communicate it in a way with the kids. I don't know, I'm not a teacher. Another thing would be, I feel like a lot of times there's a, like, disconnect between what we see, because what we see here looks fantastic, right? I mean, of course, we want our kids to succeed, we want to address all of their behavioral needs, but sometimes in between where we're at and where the admins at, sometimes there's a disconnect between our teachers. And I just wanted to ensure that there's, when I visit a school, right, everyone shows me, hey, this is what we're doing for PBIS, this is what we're doing it. But I think it'd be really, really cool if we could really help teachers understand, hey, this is exactly why we're doing it, and, I don't know, I guess, like a deeper training on that, to show them really why we're doing it, how to do it properly, so that way when, when we're implementing this program, that the teachers have a complete one-hundred percent understanding of it, and that they really can agree and be sold on it as well. That's really it. So thank you.
Yeah, consistency in, in implementation is the name of the game. So ensuring that we've...
Yeah.
Created an environment where significant training and sustained over time. That's really the only way we're going to get good results.
Exactly, and I completely agree. So I just want to make you aware of some of the things I've been seeing, just so that way when you're implying, implementing this, that we can be successful. So thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other comments or questions for Linda? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda would be information items. I would direct you to the calendar. We have a Budget Committee meeting next Tuesday night. Is it at six?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock here. We will be organizing the Budget Committee at that point. Thank you. All right. Any other information items?
None.
No? Okay. So we have three folks for subject to non-agenda, subject non-agenda items. The first one is Courtney Clendening. Did I speak that? And we would, we would ask that you would give your name and your address for the record, and you have three minutes, and the lights, when you get the red light, your three minutes is up, and if you go a little bit longer, you get the sign. Okay.
I'll do my best.
I, I know you will. So here we go. You're on.
My name is Courtney Clendening. I reside at seven eight six two St. Charles Street, Northeast Kaiser. Superintendent Perry, Board Chair Kylo, and members of the board, I'm here tonight to express a big concern I have with the current state of our district focus. I've been teaching with the district in Kaiser for seventeen years, and I'm disheartened by the systems that are currently in place. I'm passionate about the work I do with my students. I came into education to foster a love of learning, inspire, and educate children. I've watched as academic requirements have increased, causing additional stress on teachers and students. I've been able to stay the course. I've navigated through changes in approaches, curriculum adoptions, and district expectations in both reading and math. I've been able to stay the course. I've gone from working collaboratively with my colleagues, which I do believe is best practice, to a shift in required professional learning communities. We then made a shift to data teams, where rather than planning together, we were looking at data to drive instructional planning. Again, I have been able to stay the course. In the last two years, something has gone terribly wrong. I am required to meet every week in a common location away from my teaching materials to look at the planning process and data to ensure that students in my classroom are doing the same thing as all students across the district. Theoretically, I understand we want to account for mobility and ensure if a student moves, they will not miss anything, but the system does not account for teachers pacing to meet their students' needs. I'm told I must use district assessments even when over half my students will not be successful on a given task. I'm told I must use all, most, if not all, aspects of a purchased curriculum, even if it doesn't address a priority standard. I'm told the assessments must be given within a specific period to align with the district map, even if my class is ahead or behind, because the set of students I am teaching need more or less time to master a specific learning goal. I'm told I must use the system provided by the district for recording the data team process, even when my meeting time takes longer to navigate the form than doing the hard, authentic work that best serves my students. Students come to school with needs that, that need to be met, but cannot be accommodated within our outlined master schedule. Many students come with big emotional needs and do not know how to use their words to solve problems. They throw fits, lash out physically, and refuse to complete work. There is a need for social, emotional learning, exploratory play, which helps with curiosity and problem-solving, and movement, recess, which provides an active outlet to release energy and additional opportunities to problem-solve and work on social skills. We are lacking time for hands-on science exploration that allows children to hypothesize and test their ideas. Opportunities for expression to learn basic cutting, coloring, and gluing skills, as well as painting and fine motor skills, are limited. Children rarely get the opportunity to listen to stories just to enjoy great literature, which fosters appreciation for books and grows a love of reading. The realization for me that teaching is no longer about students as people, but students as numbers, data, and standards is heartbreaking. I speak to you tonight on behalf of the kids that I love so deeply, who deserve better.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Craig Olson.
Do you need the ten copies here? My name's Craig Olson, seven five one eight, Second Avenue North in Kaiser. I'm here tonight to discuss the decision to let our kids walk out of class in support of a partisan resist movement and the precedent we're setting for future movements. My twins are in the eighth-grade leadership class at Whittaker, so they've been making gun control posters all week, planning this with their teacher. Rather, the kids were making the posters that the teacher told them to make. So three of the kids said, we don't agree with this. They were told, go pick up recycling, sit in the back of the class while we make our posters. My daughter even said to me, Dad, this is a really complicated issue. None of us understand what this is about. We're just kids. So I spoke to the principal last week at length. Why not an assembly, a moment of silence? Why disrupt class when our school system's already failing? Of course, we know it's not going to make the nightly news. So I asked, why are we letting this group use our kids and parrot their message? Why not have them do research, debate? They could look into how Florida failed at every level of government, or problems and solutions to federal background check, reporting systems, what happened to society, what happened to schools, the shooting spiking in the nineties, doubling from two thousand and ten to current? What happened to our norms and values, turning from faith to drugs, social media, cyberbullying, single parents, divorce rates, video gaming that make, that degrade the value of life, the Hollywood music, music that, they debase women, they glorify violence, depression, antidepressants, all this stuff? Teach them critical thinking, not what to think and when to walk out for this, for this one group. So the principal told me she had to follow the district's guidance on this. So apparently, you guys told her, this had, they had now, the teachers have the option to walk out tomorrow or not walk out. There'll be a buddy, buddy classroom set up for students who do not want to walk out, so much for uninterrupted class instruction that, that the message told us. So earlier in the year, my daughter wrote on Instagram that students should stand for the morning pledge, because many don't. We recently retired from the Army. My daughter has the same respect and reverence for our country and the flag that, that the military community did as she grew up. So another student was even more offended from her, though. She took the screenshot, took it to the principal, and my daughter got detention. So the principal says, the First Amendment rights, on or off school time, if the conduct may disrupt school or invade the rights of others. So now hypocrisy's rearing its head here. There's no more substantial disruption to school and invasion of the students' rights to learn than a sanctioned walkout, wherein even the teacher's allowed to walk out, and the kids who want to learn and have their rights to learn are moved to a special room. So if you, as a school board, intend to walk out, continue staying political and establishing a precedent to allow our kids just to follow these national movements, then I hope you approve of all causes. In the future, if the NRA wants to have a pro-Second Amendment walkout, or when the annual March for Life comes up, the students can walk out for fifty-five million-plus babies that will never go to school. They can, so I expect the same unqualified support, the same time, school time to plan for it, and the teachers to support them. Now, of course, I'd rather have you just keep our kids out of political movements during the school time and focus on school. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Next would be Jim Aiken, I believe. Is that right? Okay.
Jim Aiken, nineteen eighty-two, Mather Street Southeast, Salem Market, nine seven three oh six, leaving board. I'm here to ask a couple questions. The first one being, I've not had a response to my testimony on, in October, regarding the OSAA and age discrimination with the North Salem student. I would like at some point, by email or by mail, a response for the board of whether you're going to take action as I requested or not. I have a couple questions. I have been educated by Marty on a couple things, so I may go to that. Superintendent Perry, I understand you're talking to the parents of athletes, student athletes, to find out what, what you might do. Are you talking to all students? The question being is, there has always been a blockade for some kids to participate in athletics, financially or the thought that they can't participate. The OSAA is a proprietary unit. They regulate without a government oversight or Department of Education oversight, as I understand, and that's wrong, because you went through a mediator, and the mediator struck you down for all sorts of things, but not for taking care of the kids. And I see the vision is, all students graduate and are prepared for a successful life. There are kids who need sports that will help them be successful, because it helps them get away from the boredom and gets them refocused on education. Kids who have to have a two-point-five or three-point to participate in middle school might be more successful, because they have, in order to participate in sports, they've got to keep their grades up. They also stop being bored. This program, I have suggested in the paper today, or this week, says, we have enough students, we have enough people, we can work a citywide program to develop athletes to get the analytics that colleges are looking for, so those who have kids who they think are going to get college scholarships can work on the analytics of... are going to get college scholarships can work on the analytics the coaches are looking for. They've got other ways to learn techniques, and the school board can provide at each high school a physical, a trainer, a weight coach, and a nutrition coach. Help the kids learn how to take care of their bodies, prepare their bodies for the next level of college sports. You could have enough volunteers to teach the fundamentals. We don't have to go all over the state to participate, and the savings can be put together to bring back the middle school sports, or back in my day, the junior high sports, that kids participated in, that got their focus. We want the success of our students, we have to bring things to motivate them. I see a bunch of adults who think they know what kids need, and we want to be a business-like organization, but the biggest thing we're missing is marketing and human resources. What motivates a kid to move on? It's not the same thing as for Mr. Green, as is for Mr. Leopold, as is for Kathy Goss. All of us are motivated different ways, and we have to learn how to motivate the kids and what strikes the chord to get the kids to be successful. It's sales, the business side of sales. You've got to sell the kids. And I'm done. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm willing to take it. Again, I would like some answers by email from the board. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, board activity reports. Anyone have any activities they'd like to report? Kathy? Jim?
So I was all over the district this last week, starting with that math review I mentioned earlier. Pride of the whole week was grandparents lunch day at Salem Heights. My very youngest grandson, first grader, invited me for lunch. And I would hope each one of you have a chance to go into your grandchildren, your children's school, and look around. Anyone that might question are overcrowding. I suggest you go look at all the new coat hooks. You know, Salem Heights has been built for years, and we always had ample space for coats. Well, now there's coat hooks on the backside of the divider, there's coat hooks on the side, there's coat hooks everywhere. We are just plain overcrowded. And I would hope that people would take my word for it or go check it out. It's actually true. After that, I went, got the opportunity to go to, be a judge for a second, third, and fourth grade cooking contest. It was wonderful. Kids loved it, I enjoyed it. After that, I went to a building blocks lunch quickly, and then to a bond kickoff, and anyone that would like to get involved is invited to. Watch your emails, read papers that come home, anything you can do. We do have a big bond issue coming up. And I finished up the week with a job fair, which was another real education. There are some wonderful young people coming out of college, just receiving their masters, that want jobs in our district this next fall. And I was really impressed by them. They were a good group of kids. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to congratulate all of our winter activity athletes who either won state championships at wrestling. Sprague finished third at the six-A level. We, all of our six-A high schools finished in the top forty. Swimming, we had some winners. West Salem Boys Basketball went to the state playoffs. And I got to go to the Mount Hood Community College Northwest Orchestra Festival, where my daughter's middle school performed and won state. So the adjudicators, they have adjudicators that grade these things. They had said that they had never seen such a prepared middle school orchestra, and now they understand why Salem wins so many state championships in music and orchestra.
Okay. Great. Jessie?
Sure, yeah. Within the past while, I went to meet Paul, Marty, and myself, we went to a fancy dinner at the Swiegel Elementary School, put on by, put on by the school. Now, that was fantastic. So as I was eating with my elbows on the table, when soup spilled on my tie, these kids would correct us and make sure that we were eating with proper manners. So thumbs up to them, because they did a great job. And I've learned since then, just so you know. I also spend a lot of my time talking to a lot of teachers. I went and visited Liberty Elementary School, as well as Four Corners. And I spend a lot of my time talking with teachers, just because I went before school started, so that way I could actually talk to them instead of them teaching twenty kids. And I spent, it was really, it was really eye-opening, just because when you actually sit down and you talk with our teachers, if you guys take the time to really just find a teacher, friend, family, someone, you've got to know someone in your close life who is one or knows one, they'll tell you a lot of the problems that we have. I mean, our class sizes, that's a pretty big issue, as well as so many other things with our students. It was great to be able to hear their insight, as well as hear some of the struggles and the daily things that they go through. And so there's really eye-opening for me, especially as a board, I think it's our duty to make sure that we're standing up for our community. And then one last thing, I also got to meet with the SKEA. Mindy was excellent, and they invited me over. And it was great also to hear from their teachers as well, just what's going on, what their thoughts are, and I thought that was, it was really insightful. So thank you.
Anyone else? Chuck?
As Kathy mentioned, the bond campaign is up and going. I would encourage everyone to get involved. There's a lot to do, a lot of work. It's a big ask for our community, but we're starting to pick up momentum. As Kathy mentioned, there was a kickoff at McKay High School at noon on Saturday that is getting things going. I was able, I'd like to thank Herb and the Kaiser Times for running an opinion piece that I wrote that was in last Friday's Kaiser Times urging people to get out and start getting involved in the campaign. We need yard sign locations, we need doorbellers, we need all sorts of help, so anything you can do would be great. On February twenty-third, a remarkable morning assembly with Senator Ron Wyden. The senator does town halls in every county throughout the state. It's a promise I guess he made when he got elected. And he chose McKay, I'm sorry, McNary High School on the twenty-third. And if you remember correctly, the twenty-third was the Friday of the week of the shooting in Florida. And I was so proud of the McNary students, the way they handled themselves, the intelligent questions that they asked, and it was really a great lesson for our kids to have their senator come to their high school during that week and conduct the town hall, which, by the way, was attended by other adults in the community, too.
Ron?
Marty asked me to report that she was at McKay on Saturday for the kickoff, and she did a lunch with Jessie and I at Swiegel, which was nice. So that's it. Superintendent Perry?
All right, a couple quick announcements. Congratulations to Chavez Elementary School, which was recognized by Oregon Department of Education to receive the Carmen West Award for Outstanding Progress for our English Learner Students in a Dual Language Setting. Chavez has five hundred and ninety students, sixty percent, seven percent of whom are classified as English language learners, and our students and staff really celebrate their diversity, and they have fourteen different languages in that school. So Chavez was among the top ten percent of schools in four of the five areas related to EL outcomes. So they, in their growth for their English language learners, and their numbers of students exiting English language development, and their long-term students exiting from English language development, and reading growth for English language learners. So congratulations to that staff, really incredible teachers and educators there, and leadership at that school. So congratulations to them. Also, major kudos to one of our teachers in the district who actually saved a life. Rachel Hubbard, teacher at Liberty Elementary School, did the Heimlich maneuver on one of our students and saved a life. So I imagine at some point we'll be spotlighting her. And on the issue of OSAA, just know that our community advisory group is continuing to meet and press in on what are the strategies we should be taking with Oregon School Athletics Association. We aren't in any way happy with this decision, and, but they have a number of strategies they want to begin working around this. So more to come on OSAA and what happens next with them. You will hear from our community that we are beginning the scheduling process for next year, because as we, we have to think about that, as we also sit back and make decisions. And part of what their, our athletic directors are working very carefully on is how do you minimize travel? And that has to be the place that they're at while we continue to make the decisions for what's next around Oregon School Athletics Associations.
What about Eric's award? Eric Richards?
Oh, Eric Richards. You know, Eric Richard got a really amazing award. He loves the spotlight, but it really was about his work and his leadership around the community transition programs. You saw that tonight with the spotlight on Epic. That is really part of the work that Eric has led in being sure that those eighteen-to-twenty-one year olds get really good life skills during that time. So we were really proud of him, and the next day I was at a superintendent's meeting, and they're like, "Oh, man, you should have heard Eric Richards. He gave a fabulous, inspiring speech to others around the state about the importance of the work that we do." So congratulations, Eric.
Chuck?
I just thought of something else in regards to CTEC. Kudos to the Salem New Car Dealers. They pooled all of, not all of their resources, but a considerable amount of resources together to purchase two hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of auto collision and painting equipment for CTEC. And so that program out at CTEC is now named in honor of the Salem New Car Auto Dealers in our community. Huge sign-up on the wall, so if you ever want to go and see that, it's quite the showpiece.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Marty wishes everyone well, and we'll see us all on March twentieth, next Tuesday. So we are adjourned.